I'm gonna welcome everyone. We're gonna start the school board meeting at 6:00. Gender review and disposition, is there anything you could add?
Uh, no. I have nothing to add.
Okay. Minutes of April 4th. Hi, Franny.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. We'll wait for you. That's okay.
Anyway, Frank's not here.
That's it.
It's Frank. Did you guys get a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
No? Do you have any questions on the minutes, Fran?
No.
So, we'll make a motion.
Do you accept the minutes as presented?
By second half?
All in favor? Alright, perfect. Thank you. Privilege of the floor number one.
Just following us to, a couple of months ago, there was some question about what the enrollment would look like for next year, and you guys were waiting until the spring to look at those numbers. So I'm just wondering what the numbers are looking like and what your plans are for teaching, teacher, local based on those numbers.
Could I respond?
Are you gonna, yeah, of course.
So, I will speak during my principal's report about our current enrollment with our current grades. Based on some conversations that need to happen in non-public, I will then, when we come out of non-public, speak to teaching assignments at the very end of the evening. And...
It should be about five minutes, tops. I would think. It's usually pretty quick.
I think we're doing a lot of nominations.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Okay, does anyone, Jenny? Thanks for coming on Zoom, buddy. Do you have anything that you'd like to add? Is there anything you'd like to say today?
Um, everybody at our school is awesome and we're really, really blessed to have us.
Well, that's a good way to start.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Alright. Principal's report.
So, our current enrollment pre-K to 8, so including preschool, is 395 students. K to 8 is 373 students. Which is about where we've been all year. So it's holding steady for the school year. The theme for this month is tenacity, which we are defining as stick-to-it-ness and determination, which is, we will use to talk about the last six or seven weeks of school and needing to stick with it and finishing strong. So, that is positive. Wanted to let you know, in the area of curriculum, instruction, and assessment, that we have been working on developing a multi-year plan for literacy professional development, based on what's called structured literacy. And we, I met today with the two assistant superintendents and a number of principals from different buildings, and we'll be moving ahead with writing a literacy plan and pretty significant professional development for all staff in the building around literacy instruction. This month, we will be having both the NIWA testing and the SAS testing. And that's scheduled. Wanted to let you know that on the Friday before vacation, PES had a visit from the Department of Ed, our onsite monitoring regarding the SAS testing and our planning around SAS testing, both the proctoring and our schedule and our systems for making sure we're following all policies appropriately. We were verbally told that we passed that onsite with flying colors. So, we expect a letter that will, will show that. Wanted to let you know that in the area of wellness, social, emotional, and behavioral health for our students, we had invited Whole Village to come to our student support meeting in two weeks, I think it was, before vacation. And they, we wanted to collaborate with Whole Village around possible social work, worker resources in the community. So we had two, two people from Whole Village meet with us around support for housing, food, parenting, employment, connection, just adult connection, those positive relationships that help with parenting. And that was a good meeting. Those individuals will be joining the PTA meeting this Wednesday night to reach out to our parents to try to build more connections, not just with high-need families, but to really sort of build connections for all parenting in, in our community. And they really would like that site to be more active and a place where more people visit. And they also will be joining us in June for our Gathering of Gratitude, our Second Annual Gathering of Gratitude with a table with more resource information. So that's exciting to, to be building a relationship with, with that organization. In student shout, yes?
Did you, do you feel like they have ample resources to help?
I think that they have more resources in those areas than we do. I think that our northern New England area is in need of mental health professionals and family resource coordinators. And I think that they are, they're working hard. They've just, this year, added two family resource coordinators. And there are, I think that there are some funding, pockets of funding for those folks. I think that they're having a hard time finding licensed social workers, just like everybody else, so. In student shout-outs and news, wanted to let you know that the Wild Things Bake Sale happened the Friday before vacation. This year, it was a combination between kindergarten and first grade, record sales, highest sales year yet. And half of the funds that were raised will be donated to the Parks and Rec Fund for Fox Park, for the Luke Bisan funding for that. So that's really exciting. The Walk-a-Thon was a huge success before vacation, as well on Earth Day. The intermediate wing had rotations, so all the, the classes in the intermediate wing rotated between each homeroom teacher and had some excellent activities related to Earth Day. I was not sure, I think that it's been three months since I have reported on the CARE Award winners. So, wanted to make sure that I got them all noted here. Brody Francis, Finn McElhany, and Charlotte Crampton were all from third grade. And those are the last three months for third grade. In fourth grade, Emily Wong, Devon Ford, and Josie Hankins were all noted for their citizenship and CARE. Amber Mitchell, Taylor Jewett-Moran, and Yora Hogg were noted in the fifth grade. So, that was very excited, that was very exciting. Wanted, in the area of teachers shout-outs, it is Teacher Appreciation Week across the nation, and I am honored to work in this building every day with the amazing teachers in this building. And I am struck by it all the time, just the hard work and professionalism of our teachers. So, I, I am just so proud of the work we do in this building. So, huge shout-out to every single teacher in this building. Got a little choked up there. As I said, there, in the parent PTA area, there is a meeting this Wednesday, 6:00 PM via Zoom. Please come. Whole Village will be there and will, I will turn over what is usually quite a bit of me talking to Whole Village so that they can, they can talk more about the activities there.
Can I, Jenny, can you email the school board members the Zoom link for that?
I would be happy to.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. That was, marigold. For upcoming events, I wanted to let you know that Kindergarten Connections is next week on Tuesday, May 10. We have 30 students that we believe will be there for Kindergarten Connections. That's exciting. We would like parents to check the newsletter and our website for NIWA and SAS dates, although that letter did go home to everyone informing them about those dates. And also, field trip dates are coming up. And I point that out because we need permission slips returned. So please return your permission slip if you get a permission slip for a field trip. And I, on June 2nd, which will be before our next meeting, we will have the Gathering of Gratitude, which is a Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:30. It functions as our academic fair. It is also the night of our book fair. And exciting news, we are collaborating with Common Man, and there will be a food dinner, dinner available that evening out on the playground. We're working on some live music. It's going to be a really wonderful night. So, please come. If it rains, I don't know what the plan is going to be. I'll figure that out then. But June 2nd Gathering of Gratitude for all families and staff, so. And that is my principal's report. And now, Kelly?
Yep. Okay, I'm gonna start off with Safety and Joint Loss Committee. We are definitely coming down to the home stretch with all of our safety drills. PES is really in great shape in terms of that. We have completed all of our bus evacuation drills. And we were able to hold another fire drill just before the April break. So, that puts it in a nice spot. I'm just gonna say, chances of holding another drill before all of the state testing happens is highly probable.
Hint, hint.
And as we move closer to the end of the year, as we annually do, we'll be revisiting and having more discussions about our PES emergency management plan, our emergency folders, and just talking about any possible safety updates and procedures that may come, or ideas that, you know, may help our current plans run a little bit smoother. So there we are with that. In terms of athletics, I will say our sports teams are pretty fortunate. We were able to get outside fairly early and not spend weeks in the gym. The weather cooperated with us. And shout-out, many thanks to our Plymouth Parks and Rec grounds crew for helping us get ready and prepping all the fields. All of our teams have opened their seasons, have a few events under their belts. Track and field team opened at Belmont on April 14th and then competed at Interlakes on April 20th. I'd say the coaches were happy with the efforts of the athletes, especially early-season spring sports. Can be cold, windy, a little bit rainy, and all of the above on any given day. So they've done a great job so far. And they will compete again this Thursday at Wunne Squam. And our softball and baseball teams opened at home versus Ashland back on April 21st. Again, both teams experienced some first-game nerves and learning curves, but worked hard and came away with wins for both teams. Softball ended up winning 10 to 7, and baseball was 7 to 4. And both teams will be hosting Moltenboro tomorrow for a 3:30 PM doubleheader. And then on Thursday, May 5th, they will travel to Newfoundland. So we're up and running and doing well.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the principal's?
No.
For a bit, thank you very much. Discussion items, attendance absenteeism, intruency policy, first read.
Right, so in next few months and early next year, we do have to catch up on some policy as we have some more time to discuss that in our, in our meetings. The first one I want to address is the attendance absenteeism, truency policy. There's been some updates to this, and it hasn't been updated at Plymouth Elementary for a while. So as you know, you're members of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. They do a great job of just putting in what's needed as far as the RSA, and they tie the truancy right to it. We have had a significant issue over the past year after coming back from COVID with student absenteeism. And we are gonna roll back a little bit as far as accountability and making sure that kids are in school and not missing instructional time unless they, unless they have to. So this is just an updated policy that includes the truancy in it. It has been more difficult to get some of the truancy, for those that are truly truant, and of course, it happens more at the high school than it does at the elementary school. But the documentation for truancy is significant. And in order to get some of the truancy pieces through the court, we have to do quite an extensive process of intervention with the families. And Jill, Officer Jill is your truancy officer, so she helps out quite a bit with that. So it's basically aligning your policies with the most current legislation and to incorporate truancy in the same one. There is a different protocol outside your policy that, that the administrators do follow, but that doesn't need to be noted in your specific policy. This, our policies are generally overarching. So, you don't have to do anything tonight, but basically, we do either two readings or three readings at, at the boards. So I'm gonna bring this back in June. I was hoping to pass it before the end of the year. So if you get it, if you have any questions over the next month, feel free to bring it to the next, next meeting. But this is pretty boilerplate. It comes right from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. And that's all I have on that page.
So, a quick question. In regards to that, I know there's like, there's no like, fine lines or anything in this? Like, say, it's kind of boilerplate? Are you saying you?
The protocol.
You guys had within the school itself, your protocol?
Your truancy protocol, yeah, which is much more extensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's worth noting the sentence directly out after number seven, where it says, "Any absences that have not been excused for any of these reasons will be considered an unexcused absence." I think that's important.
Yep. And then, parents could give input at next month's meeting if they had any, anything like that, too. But ultimately, the absentee, we give quite a bit of flexibility in, in student absenteeism. If there is an issue, it, it could be excused by the principal. And that's basically what this says as well. We're gonna pull back a little bit. With COVID, we had kids out for, I mean, at the time when they were, DHHS was having kids quarantined for 30, 40 days based on their time of exposure. We, there's no way we could implement anything, or, so.
And so, in regards to the protocol that you guys are using, is that shared with the families in, in the handbook? Or is this the only thing that's shared with families?
This is not, so this would be on your website as the policy, in reference, in the handbook. The protocols would be summarized in the, in the handbook.
In there?
Yeah.
Summarized.
Yeah.
Quite an extensive document.
Okay, and that's on the website, so if I wanted to know if that?
The truancy protocol?
Yeah.
We do not, we can put that on there, but it, it's more for DCYF and for the Police Department as far as, you know, how many letters they need to get it into the court system.
That's what I was wondering, because I know that you have to have so much documentation, and that's what, I'm sort of curious what that is contained.
Sure. I'm sure we can bring it to the...
We, I could bring it to next month's meeting, would you like that? It also is a little different depending on the age, but, yes.
Right, yeah.
And that, we have more flexibility that the board approved, whereas the other is...
The other, we already fol, we have to follow, yep.
Okay.
So, but we can definitely give you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Would this take effect immediately after we vote on it, or is it gonna be at the next?
Depend what the board decided.
If it's at the next meeting, I would suggest it take place the beginning of next year, because we're almost done at the next meeting, so. And this way, it gives us time to, to align the handbook with the new policy as well. So it's ready for next year. Okay?
I just, from my point of view, I think it's important for those families to know, because if you're documenting, they need, they could say, "Well, I didn't know," or whatever. So that's why I'm sort of curious in that regard.
Yep. Any other questions on the first read?
Budget review.
So I brought Dan tonight just to review with you the current status of the budget, since it's May. And you have some options and actions you can take prior to the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. So typically, based on your warrant articles, from last year and this year, you have a few options of what to do with the unreserved fund balance. So Dan's gonna review that. And then, as far as facilities, I don't need a separate facilities for tonight, although it says that. I'll bring that to you in June. But typically, we work off the capital improvement projects. If there's any projects that we can, can complete prior, well, during the summer with some of the reserve. You also have some of the reserve going into the capital, capital fund as well that, that you voted on this year. We have some maintenance issues that have come up, but I'm gonna have our new facilities director come next month and talk about that. It basically has to, right now, we're getting significant increase in fuel, which is, which is not budgeted for, so if we can put some money aside for that. And then there's some windows, there are some windows that need some work done. So nothing, nothing significant, but just some things we can work out this summer as well. So Dan?
Thank you. So, where we stand right now, after the manifest that was approved today, unspent in the current year's budget, 600, approximately $640,000. I do see an additional $40,000 in spending necessary that hasn't been encumbered or purchase orders entered yet for things like expenses through the park or rec departments and corporate and athletic stipends that'll still come through. I also see that approximately $15,000 in purchase orders right now for things that could be released. Example would be electricity, things like that. So that, that would bring you to about 625. What we do have, however, is a substantial revenue enhancement this year. And I can go through that on the line, on my line if you'd like. But there's gonna be about $275,000 in revenue above what was projected when the tax rate was set, which would bring us to a current projected fund balance of $891,000. The first $50,000 of any fund balance would go to the Capital Reserve as was voted in March, which would leave 841 left over if the year were to end today. What I, what I do wanna point out is that in your authorization to retain a portion of your fund balance, you have authorization, the number this year that you could retain at maximum, if you chose to, would be $293,000. I will say that last year, 271 was retained. However, you committed 239,000 of that to be a revenue for the next year. So what that boils down to is that there really could be 261 additional retained, which would come off that 841 number. Everyone followed me so far, I know I'm speaking quickly, just don't want to take too much of your time. So, if you would, if you were to vote at some point between now and the end of the year to retain the maximum amount available and bring your retained fund balance back up to the $293,000 number rolling into future years, that would bring your unreserved fund balance, if it ended today, at $580,000. That make sense?
As we're adding it to what's existing already?
I'm sorry?
Or adding it to what's existing in there?
Yeah, adding it to what's existing, but also recognizing that we committed a certain portion of the pre, what's existing to be a revenue next year to reduce the tax rate.
Is there, are there any negatives to that? I think that's something that we always talk about is stability of the tax rate, too. So I don't know if you could speak to that?
Well, you know, stability is certainly something that is important. I also think it's important to, I think it's a great tool for the school board to have in the form of retained fund balance that you are authorized to do for unexpected. You know, this year, we have a number of things that have worked in the school district's favor, including a lot of ESAR funding. So, one of the reasons, for example, that technology spending is $65,000 under budget this year is because we've been able to funnel a lot of those purchases that were required through the various pools of money that we call COVID money, the ARP and ESAR monies, right? So, there could be a year when, you know, I think it's fair, safe to assume that those pots of money are going away. And there could be other unanticipated expenses that come up. Special replacements is the common one that we talk about. So, that's the type of unanticipated expense that having the retained fund balance is very useful for future years. And I, and I definitely appreciate that you committed a certain portion of last year's retained fund balance to minimize the tax impact of the New Year's budget this coming fall. But with the, with the opportunity you have to re-bolster that retained fund balance account for future unanticipated issues, I would encourage you to do that. Anything above that, that wasn't either committed for, as Kyle said, you know, you have some items like your capital improvement plan, you might wanna pick off some unanticipated expenses you might wanna pick off this year, whether they be windows that are failing or what have you. Anything that's left over would add to that $239,000 number as a revenue in the fall to impact the local tax rate.
Hey, do you know what the balance of the Capital Reserve accounts, so we're putting 50,000 into the Capital Reserve? Do you know what's there generally?
So, what, after the, what, I believe I reported, I'm gonna give you an approximate number Phil, because I didn't bring the balance sheet with me. The, after the money that was put in this winter, based on last year's fund balance, there was about $101,000 in it. So if we have the first 50, it'll come out of the retained fund balance this year, we'll bring that number up to about 151,000 plus whatever interest is earned this year. Money can only, and just as a reminder, money can only come out of that account through a warrant article.
Yeah.
Are you looking for action on this tonight, or is, I don't think so.
No, but you could, I mean, you could, you could if you wanted to, or you can wait till, till next month.
I like to wait, because I wanna see the facilities update. I like to see what projects we have coming up that maybe we could fund.
Yeah. And we'll bring Dan back, too, to get you through, because it's important that we get all those actions completed and then, and then with the projects prior to June 30th. So you'll wrap everything up at the next meeting.
And we cut some things. I remember like lager stuff.
Yes.
I'd be interested to be reminded of what we did cut and what we wanted to do.
Yep, so your capital improvement, you cut, you cut the library renovation. You also cut the science lab renovations, which is more, you know, more of a priority. We cut all of that to reduce the, the budget, just because of the tax increases this year. So, we deferred all of the maintenance that we could, seeing if we did have some funds at the end of the year, as well as to get some of it done with the ESAR ARP funds as well. So, that's all in the capital improvement plan, which I will have for you next month. And that, basically, Jason, our, our new facilities director, will have in priority what should be done, including the unexpected maintenance pieces that came up.
So if we're gonna, you're gonna expect us to make some motions or vote on things?
Yeah, so, so, so when...
So can we have any of that before you even have to look at it?
So, you should have the capital improvement plans, I don't know if you, I can reset, I can resend them. I could put them, but I can, I can definitely send them to you prior to the board meeting, just so you have it.
That would be helpful.
The capital improvement plan will help you. And then you have, you have this worksheet for the financial piece. But I'll, we'll get out the capital improvement plan to you as well, okay?
Yep.
Perfect. Do you guys have any other questions for Dan?
Dan?
Thanks, Dan.
My pleasure.
I'll be calling you if you need me.
I just want to thank Stephanie also for coming into the S E O office today to approve the manifest and go over in great detail.
Alright, perfect, thank you. Alright, privilege of the floor, well, there's no other business, right?
I have no other business.
Perfect. And privilege of the floor number two.
A couple of questions for you guys.
Yeah, of course.
I noticed on the, I think it's the S E U website, there are emails now for the school board members, which I greatly appreciate. And I'm just wondering how frequently they're checked.
So, I can tell you that I probably check mine every other week, maybe. So if someone has tried to email me and I have not gotten back to them, I apologize, because I am not the best, I'll be the first one to admit, I'm not the best at checking that email. I'm trying to get better in the habit of checking it, because now I know that people can communicate with me there. So I do apologize if you've tried to reach out to me personally in the school board and I never responded. Terrible.
Just curious.
So, my goal is to check it at least every other week. How about that?
I check mine every week, I think.
Yeah.
It's hard, though, because some emails come to my regular email, right? From people here.
Yeah.
And so it all doesn't go there, so it doesn't motivate me to check it much. It's only the leading minutes that go there. I get it. I'm sure my other email comes up, right?
Well, I appreciate having that outlet to communicate with them, with you guys. And I'm wondering, I remember like four or five years ago, the school board came up with a couple of goals. And I'm wondering if you guys have revisited those, those, or are considering revisiting the goals of the school board at any point?
So typically, we do that at the beginning of each year. Whether it, so usually at the September meeting, which they have the board priorities right there, which are the same goals they've had, just tweaked a little bit. But at the beginning of each year, they do their annual, annual goals. So I put that... So I put that on the agenda.
Were those the only board goals, or these two?
Those are the priorities for each year, yep.
We decide on those.
Yep.
And also, in, in regards to revisiting the truancy policies, I'm wondering if there's been any research in the state or nationally around like the cause of the increase in truancy for kids? And, and I wonder, you know, if there needs to be some kind of support for kids, you know, other than just sort of a punitive approach? If it maybe, you know, we need a social worker at the school for a few years to kind of, you know?
So the new truancy policy does exactly that. It, it really is extensive intervention from the community and from the school prior to pushing that going to court. We have very, so really, the only ones going to court are very complicated, complex, and sign, not responding to any intervention. I think we have a ton of support within the community as far as intervention, whether it be Katie or Lakes Region, Spear Memorial Hospital, I mean, we're youth and, and the Police Department, I would say, all as, as intervention and prevention rather than anything else. But really, I would say within the last year, it's just a lot of, it is the mental health piece, or kids have been remote, kind of getting back, and it's, it's, it's those kids.
It's mental health and addiction issues. And there is a, there is extensive research, very well documented within the state and nationally around the rise of truancy, and it is really attributed to those two pieces, which is one of the reasons we've reached out to Whole Village. And we, we hold wraparound meetings, so we also say, you know, "Come in and meet with us, let's, let's talk, how can we help you?" And, you know, try to build relationships with families. That's what we're finding makes the biggest difference.
Yeah, I think that's key. Have you guys had any discussion about maybe bringing a social worker on board for a couple of years to, you know, especially with the numbers of fund balance, to kind of help with some of that?
Not extensively. It's why we've reached out to Whole Village, just try to see if they could support us that way, be collaborators. It's a good question though, it's a, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So anyone on Zoom has anything to say?
Jenny.
Jenny, we can't zoom.
Yeah, she's got her.
Hi.
Hi.
So this is my PTA hat that I have on, and I just wanted to say that yes, we have a meeting on Wednesday night at 6:30, and that I emailed all of the members of the school board the link, but it's also on the website, on the calendar. If you just go to Wednesday's date, it's, it's a Google Meet link. And we've got a lot of fun stuff going on this week especially, being Teacher Appreciation Week, and just a lot going on for the end of the year as well. So people can reach out to me, or they can just show up on, on Wednesday and get involved. It's never too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything else to say? All right. Need a motion to go into non?
Oh, we just have that consent.
Oh, yeah, it's fine, sorry, claims payroll.
That, I think that went around, did it come back? Okay, and then I have no correspondence.
Okay, perfect.
That's okay.
All right, now we need a motion to go.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Second, Phil, second, all in favor?
Aye.